Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Baltimore City Council. My name is Jim Kraft. I am the chairman of the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee. We are here this evening for a hearing on City Council Resolution 150202R. I'm joined this evening, to my left, by Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District, a member of the committee.
Thank you, Chair.
To my right by Ms. Marguerite Murray, staff to the committee. To her right by Mr. Paul Plymouth, representing the President of the Baltimore City Council, Bernard Jack Young. We're also joined by Ms. Angela Gibson, representing the Mayor of the City of Baltimore, Stephanie Rawlings Blake. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have any electronic devices on you of any nature or sort, please turn them off or put them on buzz or something like that. We are being televised this evening on TV 25, so if you would do that out of courtesy for our listeners and for those people who will be speaking here this evening. We're joined also by Councilman Bob Curran from the 3rd Council District, who is a member of the committee also. This is a resolution that was introduced on February the 9th, 2015, by Councilman Henry, co-sponsored by the President and every other member of the council. Very seldom we have something that is sponsored by all 15 members of the council. It is a council resolution concerning investigative hearing municipal composting for the purpose of requesting the Director of Public Works and the Chief Bureau of Solid Waste to update the council and the department's progress toward creating a comprehensive municipal composting program, to provide a fiscal impact statement on creating the program, and estimate a time limit for citywide implementation of municipal composting. Ladies and gentlemen, we're also joined by Councilman Warren Branch from the 13th District, member of the committee. This bill was referred to three agencies for comment. We received a report from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research dated March 9th, 2015, indicating that the implementation of the program would require significant financial commitment on behalf of the city, based on a cost analysis done by DPW for fiscal year 2011, that estimate being approximately $4 million. And I believe that DPW will talk about that in a little bit. Mr. Klein, you have anything to add other than that? No, he can go first.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We also have a report from the Department of Planning dated March 4th of 2015, stated that they are, in fact, supportive of the goal to increase organic and food waste composting, that that is in alignment with the Sustainability Plan Resource Conservation Goal Number Three, to minimize the production of waste, and that the new proposed zoning code will implement changes that make food waste composting more permissive without compromising water quality and other important environmental goals. Ms. Stroman, you have anything to add to that? Okay, I got it. All right. And then we, actually, the bill was referred to the Department of Public Works and the head of Bureau of Solid Waste. So, Ms. Collins, who's running the show tonight? Oh. I'm going to have you make the presentations from there, but I'll ask you from...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have with us today Ms. Val Uquoma, who is our Bureau Head of Solid Waste and who is probably our best spokesperson for this issue. We did certainly submit a report, but I think that Ms. Uquoma is prepared to just give a brief statement, and then we can just go right to questions, if you have any for us.
Ms. Uquoma, if you want to take the podium there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Valentina Uquoma, Head Bureau of Solid Waste, Department of Public Works. Department of Public Works. Zero Waste Maryland was born in response to a legislative mandated greenhouse gas reduction plan. One objective is to grow a composting industry with it a strong portfolio of environmental and economic benefits. And the composting plan is supposed to reduce greenhouse gas emission and ditched formation, reduce solid waste disposal costs, reduce the need for pesticides, herbicides, and synthetic fertilizers, conserve water, and stop erosion. It also will help filter pollution from stormwater. Food scrap composting can also serve one of those goals, help us grow the sample of rebuilding its economy and job creation. However, while there are a number of benefits associated with composting, beginning composting in Baltimore has significant challenges. And some of the challenges with composting in Baltimore include building an infrastructure to support composting in Baltimore. There is not a tradition of composting in Baltimore, city. We've tried it, and we continue to look for ways to do it. So, one of the problems is identifying locations to begin a composting, and this is limited and requires substantial upfront costs. For instance, Colorado did do a pilot composting program, and that required almost $4.4 million, and that would get to one of the studies we did recently. And this was just to secure equipment and real estate for the program. DPW currently collects yard waste and leaf waste separately from household waste. There may be as much as 10,000 tons of yard waste generated within this city in a year. Solid waste crews collect an estimated, on average, 1,200 of bag leaves each year. The city has been looking into options for composting this leaf material, including woody tree materials, tree chipmunks, and zoo manure. Yard waste will be the easiest to compost, as it creates fewer orders than food and does not attract rodents. However, it does not create rich compost without adding a nitrogen source. In order for the composting plan to be cost-effective, the composted materials will need to generate a usable, marketable product. Composting is a complex process, especially when it is in large quantities. Expertise in this area is needed to make it successful, and we keep studying that. Any feasibility studies for a composting program will need to consider sources of material, timing of available material, transportation, equipment and operating costs, storage issues, and sustainability of the operation. MDE has now released its regulations on composting, which creates an atmosphere of uncertainty for us and could result in issues of facility wear opened that did not meet the future regulations. Also, part of the challenges include limited markets, as we do this study. Though the interest in composting is growing, market development in this arena has been a slow process. Producing quality compost to provide the market must be established in hopes of generating a viable revenue stream. It's not enough to start a composting program. We must have a means of making it usable to citizens and getting it to them. The other problem is also the dense population of our city. Baltimore, as we know, you operate no better than me, is a densely populated city, a city of beautiful neighborhoods. Operating a composting facility near residential neighborhood has the potential to generate the not-in-my-backyard syndrome from the community, since composting can produce a pronounced smell. There are currently no available large-scale composting facilities in the area. The large-scale facility located in Prince George's County is at capacity, and recently regulators closed down a facility close to us. There are also the issue of rodents and other wildlife. Baltimore has a large rat population. Composting in Baltimore can attract and reinforce the rat population, and we are working to eradicate this through our aggressive rat abatement program. There's also education and promotion costs. In order for a program to be successful, there must be a residential buy-in. We think there will be one in that area of every aspect of, if the objections are treated and met. Research do suggest that it will cost approximately $1 million a year in educational promotional costs to change behavior. Are we saying no? No, we are not. We only say that this is a program that we need to study, and this is a program that we think we need in Baltimore City, but we have to do our due diligence. To do that this year, the Baltimore City Department of Public Works Bureau of Solid Waste has applied for a Baltimore City Mayor of Fellowship for 2015. What will this person do, and what will we asking them to do? The person's job will be to identify all composting facilities within 14 miles of Baltimore City by the composting bill submitted to the Maryland General Assembly. The person will assess the capacity of these facilities, what they charge, and what materials they accept, and also assess their capacity for accepting additional feedstock. The fellow will undertake a cost analysis, a more current cost analysis of the financial impact for Baltimore City to send its yard waste to composting facilities that are identified or to build a new one. He will also develop a cost analysis for establishing a composting facility here in Baltimore City. We know that will be at a cost. And these are the things that we are doing, we are looking forward to, because we do understand that composting will have to feature somewhere as part of the Series Zero Waste Plan. And we do believe that if we plan it well, it will succeed, but it will tell time, energy, and financial costs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Uquoma. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I could still say good afternoon. All right, there we go. We got a couple minutes left till I have to say good evening. Okay, I had a couple questions, both from the presentation and from regarding the report that was sent over Director Chow's signature. The first one is, just working backwards from your presentation, were you talking about all sites, all potential sites, within 14 or 40 miles of Baltimore?
We were talking about size within 40 miles of Baltimore.
40, okay, all right.
And that is what the research will include, to look at all those sites within 40 miles of Baltimore.
And so, and this is an eye towards the idea of a regional composting facility?
That's true. We will look at either going into a local regional, we'll prefer regional. We will also prefer public-private partnership. Our preference will be public-private partnership.
Okay. The reason I say that is...
That's a recommendation.
Right. And one of the things in Mr. Chow's report was that efforts to establish a regional composting facility have not been successful. And I was just going to ask, so who have we been working with to try to do that?
Yes, we actually have been working with North East Maryland Waste Disposal Authority. They actually did pull out an RFP that came in. I don't know whether this is the forum to discuss or the particulars, but when the RFP came in, we found out that it is not something that is viable for Baltimore City and for the region, so it was discarded. So, North East Waste Disposal Authority was the one that conducted that.
And they said it wasn't viable?
Yes, it wasn't viable. Why? There were certain logistics that were involved that we think is not at this point, maybe somewhere along the future, that can be met.
Okay, all right. I'll put a pin in that one. Also, both in your presentation and in the letter, and actually also in Mr. Klein's report, there's repeated reference to the fact that because MDE has not released conditions yet, there are concerns that if anybody starts their own program, and then MDE comes along and comes up with their own conditions, then we're going to have to make additional, pay additional costs to make whatever changes might need to be made. So where is MDE in the conversation of coming up with their own conditions?
They are working on it. I can't speak for MDE, I don't know a date, but we do know they are working on it and will come up with something soon, hopefully.
Let me follow up just a minute.
Yeah, okay.
So, I looked at that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the comment, the public comment period ended on January 12th of this year?
Correct.
Right. Did we submit any comments? Did the city make any comments on the proposed regulations?
The city did submit, not specifically on regulations, but on the bill that came out, the city did submit an opinion.
On the bill?
Yes, on the bill.
Okay, but the city didn't, the city didn't look at the COMR regs at all?
We did look at it, but you're asking me if we submitted something formally with regards to regulations? No, we didn't. But we did submit an opinion through our legislative office in regards to the bill.
Right. Now, I understand the bill. I mean, the bill basically says that, you know, we can operate the composting facility, and that the department would establish regulations for the composting facilities, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But all the bill does is basically, is an enabling act, but the real authority is in the regulations. So my concern is that in all of the statements about, I mean, the statement from Finance, the statement from you all, is, you know, that so much is dependent upon the regulations that are going to be imposed by MDE, that I thought that, you know, we would look at the regulations and see those regulations and see how best they would affect us and how we may want to, for lack of a better word, tweak them so that if we did want to create a facility, that the financial impact and the permitting cost upon us would be minimal in terms of doing it. And that was why I was asking whether we had done anything, because, you know, when I read through, and I didn't literally read every single word, but I did take a skim through the proposed regulations, you know, they're pretty extensive, and, you know, they're pretty restrictive. And I think that for us to do it here in the city, it could be somewhat costly in order to comply, particularly, you know, if we were going to, you know, use a, depending on whether it would be a Tier Two facility or a Tier Three facility. Now, in determining whether we were doing, you know, the Type Two feedstock or the Type Three feedstock, seems to me that, you know, there would be significant difference in the cost of the creation, maintenance, and operation, right? But we didn't make any comments on any of that?
What we wanted to do first was get the mayor of fellow, and that's part of what we want him to do, an in-depth analysis of this. And that's part of what he's going to do for us. We didn't want to do piecemeal. Yes, it's closed, but we felt MDE will do the regulations, and that is true. We want to wait and let MDE come up with a comprehensive permit so that when we start this, we already have an established guideline, because we've had facilities that have been shut down. We don't want the same thing to happen. And we think the mayor of fellow, that's why we're asking for a mayor of fellow, who would do a comprehensive research on this, because we haven't done a full comprehensive research on the cost analysis, regulations. That is part of what this individual would do for us.
Well, I don't understand, what I don't understand is, you know, I mean, we go through this here all the time, and in fact, we had a lengthy discussion when we were doing the stormwater regulations, that, you know, we wanted to make sure we saw what the storm wrote, not the law, but the regulations, because, you know, much more is done in the regulations sometimes than is done in the actual ordinance itself. So there was a lot of discussion in the work sessions about how the regulations would be done, and we looked at the language of what the regulations would be, and actually had a discussion about if certain things weren't covered in the regulations, if we may come back and put them in the ordinance. And so, you know, my concern is that when the comment period is closed, we get stuck with regulations that had we made some comments, had we, you know, put in our two cents worth early on, we may have had an opportunity to change a regulation or have something not put in there that may eventually cost us money, you know? Because you can be sure that there are lobbyists and other people that are out there working these regulations to make sure that they work in one way or another for them. So, you know, I made my point, but...
Duly noted, but also, while we did not submit something, we also have North East Waste Disposal Authority that actually works on the city's behalf, and is actually working with Maryland on that, and they do work on the city's behalf. So we trust that they do understand our concerns, and they will make sure that we are aware of whatever is going. However, our big concern when it comes to composting, regulation is one aspect of it. The big aspect of it has always been capital and how it fits into the Baltimore West Stream system.
We're joined by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, the vice chair of the committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
My apologies for being late.
No problem.
And certainly my apologies to you, Natalie.
I have a couple more.
Then go ahead. Councilman Henry?
Thank you. One of the other questions that I had was regarding the cost estimate that it would be about $4 million to do a facility at quarantine. I just wanted to be clear that that would be $4 million to do a facility anywhere. The fact that, I mean, you're just saying quarantine because you're looking at quarantine, but it's not that if we did it in some other location, it would cost less?
Correct.
Or anything like that? Okay. So there, so just out of curiosity, were there...
And that was a 2011 estimate. Things could have changed.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It was a 2011 estimate.
Oh, that's a 2011 number.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I don't suppose anything's gotten cheaper in the last four years? Well, some houses, some houses, okay. Wages, in real dollars. The, let's see, what was the other? So I guess the other question I had was, and also, I would like to take this opportunity to apologize just for one little technical note, which was, the original resolution, the intention was to ask for an informational hearing, not an investigative hearing. There was not, there was not a concern, at least on the part of the sponsor, that there were some type of malfeasance happening that we needed, or the committee, that we were not expecting to have to ferret out information. This was more an opportunity for you to just come in and let us know how things are going in this endeavor, and I just wanted to be clear about that for the viewers at home. Then the other question I have, and this is a more general one, which is, what kind of, I'm trying to think of how to describe this, what kind of pilot programs or interim steps, like intermediate steps, have been considered between going from the zero that we have now, there's really, there is no type of municipal composting, to getting to the, what I would call the full-on, we come and pick it up from your house, and we take it somewhere and it gets composted? Have you looked at anything in between, like, you know, just accepting it, just accepting composting at specific drop-off centers and only worrying about getting it from there to a composting facility? Doing, or maybe just like a pilot program in one or two neighborhoods like we've done with some other projects, where we just see how it would work and how many people? And I ask these questions because one of the things you brought up was the importance of residential buy-in. And I agree wholeheartedly. I just think that probably one of the best ways to get that residential buy-in is to offer people something to begin with and let them want more. And I think that's pretty much the approach that we took with Single Stream Recycling. I have a vague memory that you could take recycling to certain centers and drop it off long before the city was willing to come to your door and take it away from you. And so, has that been looked at?
Councilman, that's part of what this study is. That's one of the things we want, because we've looked at Howard County Program. Howard County started piecemeal, but there's this food scrap. So one of the things we want the fellow to do is look at all options, food scrap, leave, where should Baltimore go? Pilot program, piecemeal program, drop-off collection, if you citywide collection, how much will it cost? If it's drop-off program, how much will it cost? Where will we start? It will be a comprehensive study that gives the city a lot of options going into the future, because we believe that the city needs to look at this composting issue comprehensively and have options. Yeah.
The problem that I have, among many...
Be one.
Depending on who you would ask on any given day, is that, you know, we first started having this conversation about recycling of yard waste and composting back in the summer of 2009. And it, six years later, and we were talking about looking for ways to compost and how we were going to develop a program. And then we had a hearing back in July, summer of 2012, where, you know, we were asked to have an update on the city's progress in establishing municipal composting. And here we are, almost in the summer of 2015, and very frankly, the report isn't any different. I mean, you know, it really isn't. I mean, it's, you know, we were picking up grass, and we were picking up leaves, and we were picking that stuff up three years ago, five years ago, six years ago, and we heard the same thing, that we were looking for locations and everything. I mean, other jurisdictions seem to be, you know, taking steps forward, as Councilman Henry said, even piecemeal. And yet, we can't seem to get past picking up leaves. And it appears to me, and this is just me, that while the leadership, yourself, DPW, other DPW folks continually say to us, you know, we're looking, it's some other level of leadership, there doesn't seem a commitment to get us there. And, you know, I mean, I don't know how do we get from six years of saying, we're looking, we're working at it, we're trying, and yet there really is no substantial measurable progress and no real tangible difference?
Mr. Chairman, it's not for lack of trying. We're trying, and it's not just DPW that wants this to happen. We also have the Office of Sustainability that's been working with us to find a viable way. One of the things that we look at, some of our other jurisdictions in Baltimore, sorry, that has a semblance of composting program, do charge for it, because most of them are enterprise. We're a general funded program, so it's not like we can actually go out and establish a fee and charge residents for drop-off to get capital to establish this program. We always, even when private partners have come to us, we've had discussions with private entities that want to come to Baltimore to establish a composting program, and even entities that want to come to Baltimore to establish a composting program, and even ones that are already here, that we are helping to look for a location to start composting. We've recently met with a composting group, and we've recommended some sites in Baltimore that we think may be viable for a composting program. We've also tried to look for public-private partnership. So we are looking, but it costs money to start this program. One of the things is whatever proposal we get, there are things, three criterias we have to consider. Is it efficient? Is it effective? Is it going to be economical for Baltimore city residents? We don't want to just start a program for the sake of starting a program. We want a program that is sustainable. Mr. Chairman, years past, we started a lift composting program in Lincoln that got stock and got nowhere. Somehow, probably, if we go back, there may be statutes of that there, that we put it there, it didn't go, it doesn't bring credibility on the path of the city. If we go out there and say, "We are composting this, we collect it from your house," and two years later, residents find it dumped somewhere, and we're not doing anything. So we want to do it right. Yes, I understand the frustration that we come back, we want, when we start and when we have the funding, we have finance, that will have to give us the finance, that when we go to them and say, "This works either through the innovation program, if we apply for funding through the innovation, that there's a return for the city. There's a return for city residents." We don't want to start something that is not economically viable for citizens.
I understand. It just seems to me that, that six years is a long time. It's a long time.
I'm sorry to be late, and I have to leave early. I apologize. So I was one of the movers of compost resolutions in the past, because I have so many constituents in my district that really want it. So can we just talk for a minute about what goes into compost? So is it, are we talking here about just leaves and grass and things that grow that way? Or are we talking about also garbage? I, I mean, I-
Food waste?
Food waste, thank you. What, what are we, when we're working toward this program, that's what my constituents were talking about, was the whole ball of wax.
Madam, we're talking about more than that. The consensus, the general consensus out there is that just using leaves and much and tree trimmings alone for composting doesn't produce good quality products. So any good quality product must have food scraps in it.
It must, or must not?
It must.
So you need food, like eggshells?
For every, good quality.
Good quality?
Good quality composting.
Food waste?
And what, when we've talked to entrepreneurs, or entrepreneurs that wants to do this in Baltimore, that is an aspect they want. It's not just the leaves. If it's leaves alone, we have leaves in Baltimore. We actually have a collection system. Baltimore, sorry, collects, has a Monday collection of exclusively yard waste. So that one we can develop, and have a citywide collection of leaves, if we have an entrepreneur that is willing to use just leaves to produce compost-
You can.
But they also want food scrap. And to include food scraps, there is a lot of logistics involved with it. It's not very, it's not simple. It's, it is not a simpler, it's not that simple to include it. So that is where we want this study to happen. We want this study, a comprehensive study, to tell us what is out there, what we can do.
So what you're studying is what kind of food you can put into, with the leaves and the lawn waste and stuff like that?
It will include what type of composting that we can viably pursue. We, I had stated earlier that we had applied for a mayoral fellow for 2015 that will come in, and part of what they will do in a nationally assessed, undertake a cost analysis of the financial impact for Baltimore city, to send both yard waste to composting facility, and that includes food source. And tells us what is actually viable, what can we viable, what can we do?
Well, can you sell it? If you get the right combination of leaves and, and yard waste, and the right kind of food, whatever that is, and it, and people compost it, and can, and we would collect it, let's say we, all those things were happening, can we sell it for something like fertilizer? Or, well, I mean, right now, do you burn, don't we burn the leaves?
Any composting, if we have, if we're not able, and if we're not able to sell the composting program, then it's not successful. We want to generate revenue. We can't, we can't have composting material and don't sell it.
So you, are you saying that-
But, so you want to sell quality products?
You want to sell it?
Yes, definitely.
So what you're looking for is, your, your study, you're looking for a buyer to tell you what the, should be in it?
No, that's not, it, it's more than that. We're looking, we, we want the research will tell us, identify all composting facilities that we have in Baltimore city, what they set, what is their capacity, what is their feed stock, we'll look at tier one, tier two, what is better for Baltimore city. It would be a comprehensive research, madam.
And do we, have we identified, like with our recycling, when people ask me what it costs, I say, "We earn money from recycling, because we sell the byproducts." And I don't know what the bottom line is, but I know we make money-
Correct, we do.
From recycling.
It's fluctuation, but we do.
And we spend it collecting it, but we make money.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
So therefore, composting is going to go into that same category, so I presume. And so, can we help you figure out what goes into premium compost, and see if we can't do a little pilot in the 14th District?
Madam, we'll take all the help we can get.
What?
We will take all the help we can get.
All right, so where should we go to figure that out? I mean, there must be places that are doing this already.
Yes, there are, yes. There are places that do have composting. Howard do have a compost, and that's part of what I said there, that we're also looking at Howard County model.
So should we be, should our committee ask the people from surrounding subdivisions that do this to come in and tell us whether they're selling it, their compost, and if so, what, who they're selling it to, and what ingredients those buyers require? And I presume they're selling it for fertilizer. I, I hope they're, I don't even want to think of what else they might be selling.
Well, that's part of the information this research will generate.
Oh, okay, sure. I'm sorry, so there are other people that may know about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Inklum.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just say that in any event, either a pilot or a larger facility, you still have to have all the permitting in place and so on. So it's, when we do pilot programs where we're in control of what we're doing, it, it's a little easier to get them rolling. In this one, it's, it's a little bit more complicated, in that there's a permit hoops you have to jump through, so that just adds time to the process, that's all.
Okay. Brenda Platt. Is that-
Okay, I'm just reading.
Just pull it down, it'll come all the way down to you. That's it, okay?
Hello, good, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of our expertise on composting with, with the chair and the council members. My name is Brenda Platt, and I head up our Maryland Composting Makes Sense project at the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. We're a nonprofit based in DC, but we have worked for the last few decades, of course, in our backyard in Maryland and Baltimore. We would love to work, and I think we can help. I've done, worked for almost 30 years on composting and waste reduction issues, licensed, have been licensed in Maryland twice to operate big commercial compost facilities, so I can be a better advocate. I have served on the statewide compost work group that helped develop the permitting regs you were talking about earlier. And let me just actually start with, with that, if I, if you will. I will say, it's been a long process. That took two years to develop those permitting regs, and you're quite right, they're complicated, they're long, but they are performance-based regs, and they're based on regulations that are in place in others, in other states. The idea is that composting facilities need to have their own set of permit regs, but they don't need to be the same as other disposal facilities, but we want to make sure that the facilities are operated correctly. And it doesn't matter what scale you do composting at, you need to make sure that you're not having, you know, being a rat problem or odor problems. But composting is not rocket science. There is an art and science to it, so we do need to have trained operators and a clear regulatory pathway. Now, the regs were posted in the Maryland Register twice, so the permit, the comment period that ended in January was the second time. And I understand from my colleagues at MDE that they received very few comments the second time around, which is really good news for us, in that we hope they'll be in place in the next few months. You know, there's some questions about the new administration coming in, but those regs were developed with quite a large stakeholder group of, there were county, local government represented, as well as the compost industry. So I'm actually confident they're not going to change that much, but don't hold me to it. It could, but I think, you know, any regulations in the future could change, so I, you know, think that they're a good guidepost right now to start working on, so I just wanted to address that comment. So I have, I know you have color photocopies of my presentation, and I'm sorry it's so small, get out your reading glasses. And I'll just highlight a few things. I mean, and, you know, as Councilwoman Pratt noted, it is, it's not exactly a fertilizer, but compost is a soil amendment. It's really all about the soil, and when we add compost to soil, we're improving its structure, we're improving its ability to hold water. So there are growing markets for using compost, and one of the largest growing markets is actually in stormwater management and soil erosion control. But one of the other growing uses for it that we're seeing in urban cities like Baltimore is to grow local food and deal with the food security and food access issues that a lot of our communities are facing. And New York City is just a prime example of where this is happening. I never thought in a million years I would use New York City as an example, or a model for recycling and waste reduction initiatives, but they're doing something right on composting. They have, there's a new report out, which I'd be happy to share with you subsequent to this, that lays out their three-pronged strategy from promoting composting, and one is, is home composting, and two is community-scale composting, and third is the municipal composting. So Councilmember Henry, you know, when you, you know, noted that there's many different paths to go down here, I completely concur. In fact, one thing I like to say is that, you know, composting can be small-scale and large-scale and everything in between, and one of the places I advise communities to start with is not only backyard composting and community scale, but our schools, because young composters become old composters. And if we can get schools doing it, we're, you know, in 10 years or 12 years, we're just so much further down the path of, in terms of success. So I'll just say that, you know, there's some pictures here in my slides you can look at, you know, I, I, I shared some with San Francisco and Seattle, I know they're on the West Coast, but those programs are quite mature, and I thought visually to see that the type of bins that they put out, the, the kitchen pails, the, and in San Francisco the same way. The pictures you'll see in Seattle were, because they have a, a private compost facility in that case, both in Seattle and San Francisco, that's their partner, they're collecting source-separated organics, so it's food waste with yard waste in both of those cities, together in one bin. And there are programs in Maryland doing that now. Prince George's County has a pilot, Howard County has a pilot serving 10,000 households, which is very successful. You might be interested in touring their compost facility that's located at the Alpha Ridge landfill. It's a, it's a new facility, and it's, I think, quite, quite impressive. There is no one way to do this. Included in here, it's on page, if you skipped it, page three of the handout is the diverse and local composting infrastructure needed. I know it's hard to read, but it's, it's our new hierarchy, if you will, of food scrap recovery. And you may be familiar, let's reduce food waste, let's rescue edible food to feed people, really important. But what we're promoting at the local level is that next to endorse residential backyard composting, and then small-scale, community-scale composting, and then there's absolutely a need and a role for regional facilities. And we're seeing this being rolled out in, in some places, I mentioned New York City, there's a map right below there that shows of the five boroughs in New York, where the city has supported now more than 200 community-based composting facilities. And then if you turn the page, you'll see, in terms of the drop-off system, that New York City, again, is a model of something you mentioned, that citizens can now, since they don't have curbside up and running, there's something like 30 green markets throughout the city, that residents can bring their food waste they're collected. That food waste, and they have subway stop collection points, too, and then that waste, that food waste is brought to several, you know, 225 community-scale composting sites throughout the city, is delivered there and turned into soil amendments to grow local food. And it's happening at community gardens, and as well as urban farms, and I have some pictures there. Now, one thing I'll just say is that New York City has a master composter training program. So, and the idea for that is to recruit community leaders who understand what composting is, how to do it to avoid odors and rat problems. You know, you get rats, I think Valentina mentioned rats, everybody's concerned about rats. I'm concerned about rats, too, and odors. But when you have open dumpsters, you get rats. Rats are attracted to food. When you collect, put green bins out, toders that with lids that snap, rats can't get in there. There are schools that have started food waste composting programs that had rat problems with open dumpsters. And once they started source-separated organics collection, they don't have rat problems, they saw them disappear because they removed the source of the food. We're still generating the same amount of waste, but we're sorting it, and we're taking better care of it. Now, at a community level, there are techniques and best practices for the bins and the systems to avoid rats. So I just want to kind of deal with that, that you need trained operators. The Institute for Local Self-Reliance has started a neighborhood soil rebuilders training program in the DC and suburban Maryland area, and we would love to bring it to Baltimore, and we would love to bring it to each of your districts. So that's just an example of some of the things that the city could be doing. I mean, there's, that, the larger nuts of building a facility, you know, that is going to be a multi-year process, and it does need to be started, but there are things that could be started sooner. And there's many different prongs to this, and I just would love to, you know, welcome the opportunity to work with city staff and council staff to move forward.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman Henry has some questions for you, Miss Platt.
Yes, my colleague may have questions for how much you can work with city staff, but my question is going to be-
If they ever start working again.
You had, there was, there was a part where I was taking notes on the master composter training program, and then you said that there was something that you do that you would love to bring to our districts, and I did not hear-
Okay.
What is it that you would love to bring to our districts?
Yeah, the Neighborhood Soil Rebuilder Composter Training Program. We've started in DC. In DC, we're working with an urban firm, but we also have done it, rolled it out in collaboration with the DC Department of Rex, Parks and Recs. And just to give you a flavor of that, there's, DC has many community gardens, and we're working with the garden coordinator who's developing, 15 or so of the gardens have three-binned composting systems, and compost cooperatives forming and agreement, so volunteers, community leaders are joining these compost cooperatives, and, and learning how to compost, and so they know how to do it right, and, and it's something that we could be replicating elsewhere, of course.
Okay, so when you talk about bringing that to our districts, do you mean, how-
How would that happen?
How extensive is, yeah, I mean, is this a, you know, 30 hours over 15 weeks kind of course? Is it, is it longer, is it shorter? What, how?
Well, it can be custom-designed, and there's no one way. We, my colleague Linda, who's sitting behind me, did a survey of the training programs around the country. There's, they range, they vary in types. You can, we, the course we finished in the fall was over six weeks, just a few hours a week, but you can do it with the extension agent, you can partner with a private operator NGO, and Baltimore Civic Works and Real Food Farms might, for instance, be an ideal partner. So there's any number of ways to pursue it.
Okay, and I, the reason, one of, one of the aspects of that I'm curious about is, I know, is it the cooperative extension that does the master gardener program?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm- Okay, because I'm, most of the neighborhoods that I work with that have a community garden have at least one person in the community who has gone through the master gardener certification. And I'm wondering, is, is there any effort, is there any possibility of maybe consolidating those so that, like, when you're, like, I mean, to offer it as one thing? Because if you're going to send somebody out to do this in terms of the community garden, why not just start teaching them to be a master composter at that point?
Excellent question. I actually taught the half-day composting for the master gardener program on composting in Montgomery County, Maryland. And we surveyed the 50 or so students in that class to see who would be interested in being trained as a comp, a master composter, and more than half indicated yes. But it is, the, under master gardener, you have to, program, you have to commit to giving so many community service hours, and under our master composter-
It's easier.
Training, you also have to do it. So, it could-
Oh.
Give back community service. There's a, there's a definite synergy, and I think that the, some of the extension agents and, and organizations are offering the composting program, and it can be expanded. So, that's something completely worth exploring for the city of Baltimore.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there might be a way to get, like, a combined JD MBA kind of thing going where you save a little bit of time because you're trying to do both?
It's worth, it's worth exploring. I will just add on the composter training program that in New York, they've trained more than 500 citizens through their program, and it's those, those citizens have become the army of advocates, if you will, from all five boroughs who have advocated for municipal composting, the municipal composting policies. So, I, even though, you know, Baltimore to roll out a, a neighborhood soil composter training program, you know, you're only going to get a small part of the waste stream diverted through that, but it can be kind of the basis for the school programs, the community gardens, kind of building the culture of composting know-how, the citizenry, kind of understanding the importance of composting. And so, I really advocate that it's a good basis for moving forward, and probably one of the lowest-hanging fruits as well.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
No, I, I was, it's kind of a silly question, but I was thinking while I was listening about this, that it's, I, I've always thought it's awful hard to be a master gardener, and I was wondering if it's, like, easier to learn how to be a composter, like, you know, you don't have to make things, you just have to kind of know what to put in a pile, as opposed to making something wonderful happen out of the ground.
I think it's easier. I'm not a very good gardener, I admit, but I've been composting for 25 years.
I'm thinking it's a different crowd.
And I'll tell you, there's four, there's basically four things you need to keep in mind.
All right, a brown thumb.
Composting needs oxygen, so you gotta turn it. It needs moisture, but not too wet, because you don't want those healthy microorganisms to, to die. You need to also have enough mass, so if you have a two-inch pile, it's not going to compost. Has to be four feet, you know, tall, four, about my height, maybe, maybe a little less. But, and you need to make sure you're mixing it right. You know, if you all have banana peels, that's going to be a smelly mess, but if you're mixing the yard waste with the food waste and the right carbon browns, greens, carbon nitrogen ratio, and it's really learning about that. And like I said, it's not rocket science, but the trainees that have gone through these programs, they love it.
It's playing in the dirt.
It's cooking.
I mean, it's like-
It's like cooking, right.
Well-
It's easier.
Not one of my, that's-
All right, thank you.
Anyway.
Thank you.
But it's, I think you could get a whole different population of people who really would like to do that, too, that would work with the gardens and the communities and all. That might be a great place to start in Baltimore City, is just try to do it with the farms and the gardens. We have so many, and they're very dedicated, and maybe then we recruit different people to work that, because it's a different thing.
We could talk to this with our garden people.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mike Ewell, is it Ewell or Yor?
Mr. Ewell had to leave.
Oh.
He's hosting a, a meeting at Baltimore City Community College tonight.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else here who would like to testify on Council Resolution 150202R?
Mr. Chairman, I have to apologize again because I have to leave.
Okay, well, if you-
I've got to be at a meeting.
Okay.
And I, I apologize, too. I'm really interested in this subject, but I-
Well, before you leave, let me do one thing, okay? While we have everybody here, for those of you who do not know our procedure, you can just stay there for a second. For these types of hearings, we need to take a vote, and the vote really is just that we had the hearing. So, so we're going to have a, a motion from Councilman Henry that, that we report that we had this hearing. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Henry and a second by Councilwoman Clark. Okay, Councilman Kraft votes yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Curran had to leave. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Okay, we have four votes on the affirmative, no negative, one absent, no abstention. Okay, this, we will report this on March 23rd that we did, in fact, have this hearing. Okay. All right, would you state your name, please?
My name is Molly McCullough. I'm the education coordinator at Civic Works Real Food Farm.
Try to get Molly.
Molly McCullough.
Okay, Molly.
And I'm the education coordinator at Civic Works Real Food Farm, so I just-
And she's a wonderful person that does great community service, and she doesn't even need to because she has all her credits. And they love her at the community school. And, but don't tell them I had to leave. They'll never talk to me again.
Please, please report. The Councilwoman Clark left at 5:58.
There's a 6:30 meeting which I'm chairing, so I-
I understand.
Yes, no, just for those who are, are watching, actually, on TV audience, that, that when we have these hearings, council members do have numerous meetings in their district, and as you've seen, another council member come in earlier, they do come in and out because they do have these other obligations. So, it's not that they are not interested in the topic or, or their obligation here in the council, but we are sometimes shuffling between many obligations. So, go ahead.
Sure. I just want to report as a, from a farmer's perspective, we know that healthy soil is necessary for healthy nutritious food, and that composting is really the way that nature takes care of our waste. And so, for us at Real Food Farm, compost is an important way for us to build soil fertility on our farm. It's a way for us to manage the heavy clay soils that Maryland tends to have, and a way for us to kind of reclaim soil that might be considered post-residential. So, many of our Baltimore neighborhoods are having spaces that are becoming available for farming, but the soil is very low quality. Composting can help amend that. And at the farm, our composting system is where, a place where we can explain to visitors how we manage our waste. It doesn't just go away, it becomes something, and what compost materials can become is healthy soil that helps to sustain us.
Let me just ask you a quick question about that. And this was something that, in one of our conversations just recently, someone said to me about the soils in Baltimore. So many of the soils have high qualities of lead and acidity and all that. And having grown up here and having eaten tomatoes and everything out of everybody's yard before they knew all these things, using the compost materials, that would help neutralize some of this or make these soils better, or does that have an effect at all on it or what?
From my understanding, having extra soil organic matter or compost can help to limit the mobility of certain heavy metals in the soil.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, okay, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else here this evening that would like to say anything whatsoever about Council Resolution 150202R or composting or anything else? All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our hearing on Council Resolution 150202R. The Committee, Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee stands in recess. Thank you all for attending the hearing. Please check the area around your seat to make certain that you have everything that you brought in with you. We'll be closing the room shortly, so we ask you to exit to the first floor main entrance. Once more, thank you all for visiting City Hall, and have a good evening.